Excellent. I'd like to call the Village Council meeting of Monday, May 23rd, 2022 to order. Will the clerk please call roll?
Commissioner Millet Walters?
Present.
Commissioner Polk?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Present.
Mayor Mahoney?
Here, thank you. Let's all scan for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have in the packets this evening a draft of the minutes from our previous meeting on April 25th. Any questions, comments, or just changes, otherwise I would see a motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
Second.
Hearing a motion, a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Millet Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries. Recognition, proflamations, appointments, and presentations. I'd like to proclaim May 21st through May 27th, 2022, National Safe Voting Week. Increase public participation in this hot outdoor sports as emphasized the need for greater attention to courtesy, safety, and education to minimize incidents which lead to voting mishaps. Consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or been brought forward at the direction of order commissioners and are made into one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be included in consent agenda and considered as a role. I am prepared to approve community association institute raffle license and raffle waiver request for a raffle to be held on June 7th, 2022, at Cockville Golf and Country Club. Item B, to approve a contract between the Village of Payless Park and the Block and the M L L P for actual aerial services to prefare. G S B Statement Number 67/68, actual aerial evaluations and reports for fiscal year 2022 caper as well as determination of the village's annual report contributions to Payless Park Police Pension Fund for fiscal year 2024. I am seeing to approve by payment of invoices on a warrant stated May 9, 2022, with an amount of $118,456.67. Item B, to verify the supplement on a warrant stated May 9, 2022, remaining tax payable on current wire transfers with an amount of $374,858.37. Finally, E, to approve payment of invoices on a warrant stated May 21st, 2022, with an amount of $55,888.67. So, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Hearing a motion, a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Millet Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries. Any items of old business to be brought before the council at this time? Let's move to information updates, Public Works history, recreation report. Commissioner Millet Walters?
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. I have a few items. First one regarding the paving of the capter center parking lot and the recreation parking lot. With the village paving over the next three years being funded by the road bonds and last year's paving project coming in under budget, the half percent sales tax has a surplus balance this year. As such monies were put into the 2023 budget to pave the parking lots at the capter center and at the recreation building, which is Memorial Drive, Public Works asked for prices from several contractors and received multiple proposals for each project. Lindahl Brothers, who conceded last year's paving project, was low on both. Irish Castle's bid was $68,500. Lindahl Brothers, $59,215 in pavement systems incorporated, $75,266. That was for the capter lot. For the recreation lot, Irish Castle bid $45,500, with Lindahl Brothers bidding $43,335. So, Public Works would like to award both projects to Lindahl Brothers Incorporated for a total cost of $102,550. Once they receive signed proposals, they will submit a schedule to the village. They are aware that either project should be under construction during the concert in the park event. Does anybody have any question? As there are no questions, I move to waive the bidding process and approve the two proposals from Lindahl Brothers Incorporated, total of $102,550, to pave the parking lots at the capter center and the recreation building.
Second.
Hearing a motion, a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Commissioner Millet Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries.
The next item is regarding the purchase of a new dump body truck. The Public Works Department's last purchased an inside dump body truck deck in 2011. With their fleet aging, Public Works would like to purchase a new truck for this fiscal year. This time, we do not intend to remove any truck from service, so it will be in addition to the fleet. Public Works requested a price through the joint purchasing cooperative, same crew police vehicle for purchase from. And the price for the Ford F-550 chassis cab is $42,926. The price for the equipment needed to complete the truck, a steel dump body, snowplow, and hydraulics, spraying system to apply the pre-salt treatment, and safety lights from Monroe Equipment is $71,799. For a total purchase price of $114,275. There is money set aside in our 2023 half percent sales tax fund for this purchase, and this truck must be ordered before the cutoff day and would arrive sometime in late September.
Commissioner Millet Walters, I just ask you to repeat the price again. I think you may have referred it over.
A total of $114,275? What did I?
I've got a type over here.
Okay, wait. 12, 7...
Oh, on the...
Oh, 725. It's $114,725.
I want to make sure you got everybody to put this, you know, armrest in.
Yeah, exactly. Considering all the additions cost more than the truck itself. But we need those two salto roots, so thank you for that correction. I'd like to make a motion to waive the bidding process and approve the purchase of the Ford F-550 chassis cab from the joint purchasing cooperative and required equipment from Monroe Equipment for a total cost of $114,725.
Second.
Any questions? Any other questions? Hearing a motion, a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Commissioner Millet Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries.
And my last agenda item is regarding a proposal for a new fiberglass manhole liner for the Kimber Trail Lift Station outlet. Earlier in the spring, the Kimber Trail sanitary lift station was experiencing longer runtimes for the pumps, even in dry weather. Public Works Utility Department staff investigated and found that the manhole that the forest main dumps into before connecting to the M W R D interceptor was full of roots. The roots had intruded into the forest main east of the Deer Creek Crossing. The manhole has had roots intruding through the joints. The roots were taken out and cleaned from the pipe. However, this issue will continue unless the manhole is sealed. The village asked for a proposal from Aries Incorporated to install a full-depth fiberglass liner to help reduce the pressure of several other cities, including Payless Heights, having manholes sealed in the same way. The price for this work is $19,749.53, will be paid out of maintenance monies in the 2023 sewer fund budget. I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal from Aries Incorporated in the amount of $19,749.53 to install a full-depth fiberglass liner in the discharge manhole for the Kimber Trail Lift Station Forest Main.
Second.
Any questions? Well, I think the staff are working, communicating with other municipalities to see if they have the same problems and to, you know, get economies of scale of purchasing. That's excellent work. So, we do have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Commissioner Millet Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries.
And then just two quick announcements. Starting tomorrow, our new patio behind the recreation center is going to begin construction. The council approved this enhancement in April, and I'm happy to report the patio on sidewalk areas will be poured tomorrow. This new patio will be available for all our events, including Concert in the Park, which is on Thursday, June 16th. And speaking of Concert in the Park, join us on June 16th. Big Browns will open at 6:00 p.m., and the OutKast Jazz Band will entertain from 7:00 until 9:00 p.m. Bring your own food, beverages, blankets, or chairs, and come hang out. And we'd like to thank Payless Fight Arts and Republic Bank for their support for this year's concert. And despite all the cancellation of events and fundraising that may have taken place during COVID, Payless Fight Arts has generously donated $1,500 in support of this event, so we appreciate their help. And keep an eye out for this flyer to remind you, June 16th, Concert in the Park. And that concludes my report.
The band is excellent. They were at a concert in the park, what, seven, eight years ago? They did play at the Castle Park at least twice, and they did perform for the villages in Centennial's Celebration in Cockville.
Yeah, and they, I'm sorry, they're big fans of sounds of the '30s and '40s and '50s, but they also throw in a little Van Morrison and Ray Charles and stuff like that.
Yeah, I agree.
So, do I remember correctly, no picnic tables?
Right.
And people can bring whatever they want to bring, they're all meeting food service?
Correct. Correct, no food. Bring your own food and drinks, roll in your cooler, done with blankets and...
Good, I would pay for a food truck to show up.
If that happens, maybe we'll have people get a food truck to show up, but don't count that, bring your own jazz ticket.
Yeah, I agree. I was thinking a lot else now.
No, no, don't. We like those ideas. That's all I got.
Excellent. Building and public property, Commissioner Reed?
I'd like to thank you, Mayor Mahoney. Prior to making my report, I'd just like to say thank you to all those who were involved in getting that addition, the board behind the recreation center. For the first time in 10 years, my son may be able to go out there to the gout and see this stuff, so I want to say thank you. Now, in my report, construction, conduct, and work hours. We all have a role in protecting, maintaining, and improving our environment. Construction, conduct means being a good neighbor. Village Code, Chapters 1460, 652, and for any defined appropriate conduct, our construction subs. Please refer to codes online or get a copy at the capter center. The goal is to keep undesirable impacts to a minimum. Respect for neighbors, safety, and cleanliness will lead to a successful construction project. Contacting your customers Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. or dusk if earlier, and standard days, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. or dusk if earlier, and not on New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. Homeowners may do construction Monday through Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. or dusk if earlier, and Sundays and holidays, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. or dusk if earlier. Please contact the village if you notice any work being done outside of the work hours mentioned previously, or complain will be taken seriously and will thoroughly be investigated and adjudicated. The building problem processed 33 permits during a period of April 19th through May 17th, resulting in $51,788.30 per minute used. During the formation time period, inspections were completed. Fiscal year 2022, total of $472,612.58. And fiscal year 2023 to date, $27,065.45. And costs have been corrected. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. You'll be looking forward to seeing Brian out there this year at Cockville.
Thank you.
Public health and safety, Commissioner Polk?
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. We'll start with the police activity report. This covers the period of time between the 25th of April through the 22nd of May, so almost four weeks. We had 3,631 calls for service. It's down a little bit. Everyone's behaving, I guess. But tickets are a little bit up, so 54 adjudication tickets and an additional 15 traffic tickets, 46 written, and an additional 19 verbal warnings. Took an additional 34 case reports, 21 accident reports. Everybody's out on the roads. Arrested an adult, fortunately no juveniles, and pounded the vehicle, and performed 22 formal senior checks and an additional 51 citizen assists. So, that's what Payless Park Police Department's been up to lately. Just a couple of quick thoughts. The first is that we're coming up on the Memorial Day weekend, which is, I guess, either the official or unofficial start of summer, and it rates as one of the top traffic weekends of the year. Slow down, give yourself a little bit of time. We certainly encourage people not to drink and drive, and to have a designated driver if they do decide that they want to drink and not drive, please. I'd also remind you that drowsy driving can be just as dangerous as DUI. And for those of you who haven't been outside down the roads surrounding Payless Park for the last couple of weeks, I'd remind you that it's construction season. Don't go north, just go south. Circuit navigate the globe, it's actually quicker. But be careful, exercise some patience and caution when you encounter the roadwork areas, and please, please, please obey the posted speed limit signs. Not the time to be passing someone else when you're in a construction zone. And then finally, for your listening pleasure, the Payless Park Police, along with partner agencies, will be planning DUI checkpoints this coming holiday weekend in the spirit of safety. And then, last thing, with the warm weather, comes an increase in bicycle traffic. It's a lot of fun, good exercise, doesn't pollute the air, but a bicycle can be dangerous, I don't know if to the person riding the bike, but to pedestrians and motor vehicles that are around. So, please remember that bicycles are vehicles, just like cars and trucks, and they have drivers. All vehicle drivers, including bicycle drivers, follow the same rules of the road, perhaps with the exception of speed limits, generally out of those. So, again, a safe bicycle driver drives on the correct side of the road, which is the right side of the road, obeys traffic signs and signals, including those pesky stop signs out in front of edes, and uses hand signals to let other drivers know when that person, the bike driver, is going to stop to turn. Another thing to remember, even though the days are longer, the bicycles are smaller and harder to see than other vehicles, particularly at night, and so it's useful to have lights and also be dressed in clothing that should be reflective. And then, the other thing that many people don't think about is try to be predictable. You can be predictable by obeying all the traffic signs and by using hand signals. At intersections, before entering a street, make sure that you look around, because while you might see the cars and trucks, they may not see you. So, pay attention to what's around you when you're riding a bike. Join the Cal State Trail. Chief Miller! Anything else you'd like to add?
Nothing, Commissioner.
Thanks very much for your service. We still have bike helmets at the Payless Park Police Department for...
We do, and we'll be giving helmets out at the bench dedications at Trailhead Park on June 4th.
Excellent. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Accounts and finances report. Alan, are you going to hand me those?
Tonight, I'm asking for the village council to pass a resolution approving an investment management agreement with Premier Asset Management LLC. This resolution states that the village desires to enter into a contract with Premier Asset Management, a subsidiary of First Midwest Bank for investment management services. So, a few months ago, the village issued road bonds of over $3 million, and we're not planning on spending all those $2 million on day one, so this is an opportunity to invest some of those proceeds that we're not planning on losing this year, to invest those and earn a greater return than we would have just sitting in a general bank account with First Midwest Bank. So, that's the premise for this tonight, is to invest those excess road bonds that we're not planning on losing this year, and put together an investment strategy that maximizes our return and also makes it mature in time for us to use those funds to pay for those road projects down the road. So, to that end, tonight we have Maury Kazak, Senior Vice President from First Midwest Bank, and he's going to give a career presentation for us tonight. So, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for having me here at Village of Payless Park. I live right down the road from Vermont, and I cast her on my way to work almost every day. Anyway, so, I'm going to jump right into Slide 2, which is the agenda. I'm going to do a quick introduction, the type of investment approach, philosophy, strategy, and process, relationship management approach, the advantages of U.S. treasuries and bonds, the reporting, online capabilities, fees, and transitions, and then just a simple comparison of bank account interest versus what you could get in an investment management portfolio. Why would you choose First Midwest? And then I could have a sample investment portfolio. Keep in mind, markets are moving a lot every day, so these are prices as of snapshot in time. Bonds tend to be more stable, though, than equities. So, I'm going to jump to Slide 3. Sorry, I should be keeping up with the political character. So, in terms of myself, as Alan already mentioned, I'm a Senior Vice President. I have over 30 years of experience here at First Midwest and with Northern Trust. My bachelor's degree is in accounting. I'm a CPA, and my master's degree is in finance from New York to Chicago. I too sit on many boards and do quite a bit of volunteer work, so been in your shoes before. And in terms of our wealth management team, we have $34 billion worth of assets under management. Is that big? That's very, very large. We're the second largest in the state of Illinois, and it ranks us in the top 25 across the country in terms of wealth managers. My experience, I have about $20 billion in assets. We're public funds, foundations, and now into corporate plans. Obviously, with us, you're going to get a dedicated relationship manager, myself, and we own Premier Asset Management. That's a wholly owned subsidiary who is a registered municipal advisor. When you have bond proceeds, you have to have a registered municipal advisor who manages those funds for you. So, that's why we're using Premier Asset Management. We have Premier Asset Management, Northern Oak. We also have our own internal investment management group. Obviously, Old National Bank, who we are a division of, they were founded in 1834, and First Midwest Bank was founded in 1940. Our combined assets as two banks together is $46 billion. That brings us in the top 35 banking companies in the United States, and we're currently located in these states. I'm going to jump then ahead is, again, I already mentioned, we're a fully comprehensive wealth management firm, and what I mean by that is we do soup to nuts. So, we take on fiduciary responsibility. We do the investment management. We can do administration and record-keeping, and again, I'll talk later about all of our online capabilities and recording and custom recording and all that, but we do soup to nuts. We're slightly different than a brokerage firm, because on brokerage firm typically they will take or offer products that accept commissions and those sorts of things. We don't do that. We are very unbiased. We want to do what's best for you. We create custom portfolios for each one of our clients, particularly public funds, because you're, you have to comply with ILCS 235, which is the Illinois Investment Public Funds Act, and you have to comply with your own investment policy statement. And Alan shared with me a version of a proposal for your investment policy statement. That, too, I've seen hundreds of them, so leverage my expertise in that regardless of whether we move forward with this or not. But we're a comprehensive wealth management firm. We're, we are different. We're goals-based investment approach. We're nimble, we take, we take, I shouldn't say we take, we manage the risk. Risk management is probably the number one thing that we do very, very well. I have free research analysts, they are looking at everything soup to nuts, anything that we offer our clients every single month, running things through data points to make sure that we're managing risk. We feel that that's extremely important. We're fully transparent. You're going to see a monthly fee, you're going to see the daily portfolio available 24/7, so we're fully transparent. We're not doing something behind the scenes that you aren't aware of, which is really critical as a public fund. You're a public entity, you're in the, you know, the taxpayers should be questioning what you do, so everything should be fully transparent. And you're going to get personalized service, so, I mean, you're going to have me available 24/7, and I've got a team of people behind me. The next slide, Slide 5, just really talks about you're the focus of our business, meaning that I want to understand what your needs are. Alan's already shared with me. What's the needs? What's the goals? What's your proposal for your investment policy statement? Come up with an asset allocation, then we construct the portfolio. And again, then it's managing risk, managing risk, managing risk from there on out. Now, here we have on Slide 6, we have our investment process. Time-tested approach, we've been doing this since 1943 with our first client, so we have this, what we call core, it's satellite strategy. Again, as a public entity, you won't be able to use many of these, i.e. our equities and alternative strategies. However, just know that we're out there. Again, we have the ability to do anything. You should tap into us if you need any of these resources. Slide 7 also talks about we combine leading research with our own proprietary research. So, I mentioned I have research analysts who do our own proprietary research, goals-based surrounding asset allocation strategy, and again, wrapped around everything is risk management. So, again, you're not able to use the equity strategies that we offer, however, just know again that we have them, they have the capability to do them. I'm going to jump right to Slide 8. Relationship approach. It's really critical in servicing public funds. For the last 30 years, I've been doing this. High level of communication and client service orientation, so you're the client, the Village of Payless Park, you're at the center. We're all about doing what's right for you. I'm actively involved in all aspects of servicing public funds. Again, updating investment guidelines, being a resource for administration, for the board, reading ideas, presenting results, providing investment management and all the related services, and feel free to ask me any questions. You should leverage what I know and work with many, many other clients, and I'll meet with you on a regular basis. Some of my public funds, like neither quarterly, some semi-annually and some annually, or just provide a monthly report to someone like Alan, and then, you know, but I will be here, and you will have direct access, not just to me, but everybody behind me, all the experts. So, if you wanted the actual portfolio manager who's buying and selling, I could have him come with. He's kind of boring, but just poor boring. But just so you know. All right, Slide 9. The advantages of the U.S. treasuries, of course, that are allowed by ILCS 235, are backed by the full faith and credit of the U.S. government, though considered, quote-unquote, "thus safe" as investment. They're marketable, they're liquid, they trade every single day, so even though you buy something that has a maturity date of May 18th of 2023, if in the meantime we needed to sell that, we can do that within $24 to $48. The stated coupon and interest rate is typically much higher than in kind of CDs. We typically purchase these things at a discount. We hold them to maturity, and it mitigates the risk of increases and decreases in the Fed funds rate, and you're not limited to the $250,000 FDIC insurance. That's probably something I'll stop for two seconds and just mention, because I think it's really important. When Village of Payless Park opens a bank account with First Midwest, or any bank for that matter, that goes on the bank's balance sheet that's subject to creditors. So, you have that FDIC insurance limit of $250,000, and then we collateralize over that level. We have a wall, some people call it a check-ins wall. It's just a wall. On wealth management, when you open an account in wealth management, that belongs, it's called a trust. We take on fiduciary responsibility. That belongs to the owner of that account. So, Village of Payless Park is the owner of the wealth management account that we would open for you with the bond proceeds. Doesn't go on the bank's balance sheet, it's not subject to creditors. So, if for something happens to us overnight, the Village of Payless Park would automatically get everything in that account. So, just so you know, we don't do FDIC insurance, no FDIC insurance, no FDIC insurance. So just so you know, we don't do FDIC insurance, no collateralization. It's a trust. It belongs to Village of Payless Park at all times. We don't have any right to do anything except the authority given us through the contract. So there's a difference, just so you know. We would obviously ladder the maturities. Alan provided a spend schedule, so our cash flow, you know, when we ladder the maturities, it would follow the cash flows of the needs of Village of Payless Park. Same thing, corporate bonds. Corporate bonds are also allowed by ILCS 235. Obviously, there's limitations. They have to be well-capitalized. They have to be on the three, one of the three highest classifications of corporate bonds. And we can do one third up to 270 days and then another third, 270 days to three years. They also are marketable and liquid. They trade every single day. So again, feel less than 8:00 AM in the morning, we can sell it, have cash for you tomorrow. Same thing as U.S. Treasuries. Usually the stated coupon or interest is going to be much higher than what you would experience on a bank account or a CD. We usually hold them to maturity, again, trying to insulate ourselves from the interest rate risk. But it also allows investment diversification, you know, from U.S. Treasuries, having corporate bonds. It's kind of nice to have a diversified, well-working portfolio for you. And again, we ladder the maturities to meet the cash flow needs of the spend schedule for Village of Payless Park. All right, so in terms of reporting online capabilities, fees and any transition issues, you would have access. Whoever you wanted to provide access to would have access 24/7. You go in online any day, anytime and see what the portfolio is constructed of, any accrued income. You can see what's about to mature. There's all kinds of information about the individual securities. And I can provide a monthly and/or quarterly investment packet. And again, we do things like a monthly market review or quarterly market outlook. And again, we can customize that to whatever the needs are for the Village of Payless Park and or what Alan needs. Annual fee. So again, different than a bank account. Most bank accounts, bank accounts don't really have fees and if they do, they're pretty small. We have an annual fee. It's all-inclusive, so the annual fee for Village of Payless Park is 0.20%, and we charge 1/12 of that on a quarterly, I mean, on a monthly basis, excuse me. And the reason we do that is because if you're taking distributions out, you shouldn't be paying an annual fee on the highest amount you had in there, you know, because your balance is going to fluctuate, things mature, maybe we spend, send money out or whatever. So you're going to be paying the fee based on the most recent market value. And then obviously, I don't think we have a transition involved and the money sitting at First Midwest in the bank account will simply transfer that over. That's the other thing, the beauty of having at First Midwest a wealth management account in a banking account, as long as you get an email authorizing us to do so, we can transfer monies between the bank account and the wealth account. So it's kind of seamless, you know, if you just need the money and you're checking out to go ahead and pay a bill, that's on the spend schedule. That works pretty well. All right, I did a very simple, basic calculation. The current bank account rate is pretty much everywhere, 0.04%. Now again, those are likely to increase because the Fed is increasing the Fed funds rate. We don't bank accounts at 1/12, they're the last to go up, it seems like, even though the Fed's increasing the Fed funds rate. So the investment portfolio, which I'll get to in a minute, the gross of fee yield is I did a simple calculation of two years at the current bank account rate of 0.04% came to $2,448. But the investment portfolio, I did a cash flow analysis and the interest income would be $82,488. So you're talking, you know, $80,000 difference between having just the money sit in the bank account versus investing through an investment management portfolio. And again, I base that on, you know, $3 million, $30,000 I just rolled up. So to wrap things up, why? Why would you choose us? Again, we're service-driven, we're not pushing products. We offer a personalized investment solution. We're not compensated by any investment providers, meaning we don't take commissions or any fees, no stock dollars, no hard dollars, no research, no nothing. We do everything on our own. Clients have direct access to the decision-makers, i.e. myself, but also everybody behind me and above me. And we have very, very competitive fees. Just so you know, the investment management rack rate right now is 1.5%. For most public entities, it's about 1%, so it came way down. I really like you, Alan. It came way down on the price. But again, we want to work with all of our local entities and all of our public funds. I own a lot of public funds. So this last bullet point, when I first started with First Midwest, seven, eight years ago, I took that out because I had spent 28 years at another firm and I said, you never give a service guarantee. But they insisted we keep it in here, knock on wood. I've never had to give anyone back a full year's worth of these. However, if after one year you're not satisfied with what you're doing, we're doing for you, we're not satisfied with the portfolio, we'll give you that first year's fee back. So you do have a one-year guarantee. And then I'm going to jump ahead. Oops. Hopefully, if you have it in your packet, I apologize. I did create a portfolio sample. You guys got that in here? But anyways, it's, yeah, the last three pages, it's behind it. So we came up with a sample portfolio. Again, based on the spend schedule, we have about $1.1 million that's maturing June 30th of this year, and then another $500,000 June of 2023, another $500,000 at the end of June, $400,000 in April of 2024, and then another $500,000 in 2024. If for some reason when something matures and you don't end up spending the money, we'll just go ahead and reinvest that again, given how we think we have time there. So basically, as you'll see, there's a stated coupon, there's a maturity rate, there's the ratings. The price, again, as I mentioned, the U.S. Treasury, we typically buy at a discount under 100. And then the last column is the yield. So the yield for the portfolio would be 1.891% less our fee, net of fee would be 1.691%. Again, way better than 0.04%, or 0.05% even at an aggressive bank rate. The second page is just a bond maturity schedule. It's not very exciting because who did it in four simple tranches? But the last page is a dynamic asset cash flow analysis. So put this together, just so you can see, the income that would be coming in to the portfolio is the middle column, total interest, see out cash flow. That came to the $82,448, but I calculated it early, again, just for the simple comparison. So I know I went through that pretty quickly, but I'm also respectful of people's time. But what questions do you have?
Any other questions? So one question.
Yeah. You know, I was not aware when this part of me, me, started what you folks were talking about because Director Antic was not close enough to me to pick up. And I finally figured out what was going on when I heard the young lady talking. And I remember a whole bunch of words. Many times somebody puts a 14-page PowerPoint in front of me, it's a word salad. For people who are sitting, listening at home and do not have advantage of, advantage of the documents, the two just read new. Allow me to maybe quickly summarize what I saw, I heard. And that is, this company pretty much wants to be the village's personal banker. They want to basically manage the assets of the village for a few, following all of the rules and regulations that have been set up by the various government bodies to make sure that the village doesn't lose any money. Is that, is that pretty much a summation of a whole bunch of stuff that I did hear?
Yes.
Thank you. And you know, maybe if you just would have started with that, you might not have lost the whole audience, because that was a whole bunch of words. You did a good job in your job of putting, as for, we're not going to come here and say your company's stink, because you're not going to do that. So, you know, this is what used to be, this is for fee and your Director Antic, then to do good, then I'll follow this lead because this is out of my, this is out of my way. But you know, you can't do stuff like this. You really can't. You got a job to do, but you know, to summarize it so we don't put this shit on you and kill yourself. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I had just one question and there was a mention, I think Alan, you mentioned about an investment policy and draft.
So the OIS does not have approved investment policy yet for, I've been working with Rick over, working on one for the last several months, is not yet taken to council. Our initial auditors have looked at it, but it has not yet gone to, gone to council. And that draft document I shared with her, just in case it got to the point that, you know, the board was going to, got to the point that I took it to council and the council.
Okay. Is that something that should occur before we hire the investment manager? I mean, I read through the materials. What is happening with the laddering of the bonds is, it's, my big question before the presentation was, we're making sure that we're not investing in bonds with long, which are, which we're not. We're, we're only buying bonds that come mature when we expect to use the money. So we don't have a risk of loss of principal because we typically are buying at a discount to par, as it were, and we are taking the bond back or redeeming it at its maturity for its principal price or its par price. So I'm not concerned about what we're doing, just the question of should the cart come before the horse?
I certainly see your point of view and I know the investment policy that has been drafted is going to state that we're purchasing, there are going to be any compliance with the Dono Compost Statute that was, that was mentioned here. So I know there'd be nothing in that investment policy that would limit us in this, in this scenario.
So let me go one more step. What's the overriding concern for doing this tonight versus doing it a month ago?
Other than maybe losing a few interests.
$1,000 divided by 36.
Yeah. It's not going to be significant if we waited another month to prove it?
Because I got other questions that probably aren't appropriate with yesterday. So I mean, I mean, go ahead and do whatever voodoo we have to do here. I'll just order it.
Can I share with you?
Yes.
Hi.
Welcome back. Sorry about that.
Oh, no, I asked my captain to appreciate me. That's okay.
Oh, I'm not supposed to hit that link button on the phone? Oh, I'm sorry. Just joking.
All right. That's my real house, it's dark and blue, I'll get it back soon. I appreciate you.
No, just while you're gone, Dan and I asked a question about the investment policy that was mentioned prior, and I think sensing the direction is that we're going to table this, I would like to table it to the next meeting, the first meeting in June.
Yeah, I heard when I got cut off, I heard you suggesting that maybe we should not do this this evening, and I am in total agreement with that. Unless, unless it's something that's absolutely necessary, let's back it up a little bit and maybe take a thought.
That was my comment as well, Commissioner Reed. This is Commissioner Polk.
Listen.
So I guess, continue though. Yeah, do you have anything to add either?
And while you're willing to come back the next time, should you have the desire, inclination or pathing through, I don't necessarily think it's required.
No, we appreciate you taking the time to provide the presentation and it makes all the sense, but I, I think we ought to have the investment policy passed as well, although the strategy I think is really straightforward for our municipality. It's, it's not rocket science that you're, you know, you basically have a strategy of we're doing road projects this year, a year from now, and then the third year, and you're just laddering the bonds so that they'll be payable back to us when those project ones are needed.
And I could just tell you from my own experience, where again, having done this for over 30 years, but also the number of, you know, villages, counties, cities of, townships of, is probably about 60% have an investment policy statement, the other 40% do not. So doing this without an established investment policy statement is no harm, and I'm not suggesting that because you need to move forward. I'm suggesting that just because your investment policy statement is going to state in it that you have to comply with ILCS 235, the Illinois Public Funds Investment Act, which is exactly how we created this portfolio. However, I would also say after that, any public entity should eventually have their own investment policy statement beyond ILCS 235 for other things, you know, objectives and, and anything else that you might want to limit, although rarely do public entities limit anything from ILCS 235 because it's so limiting as it is. But that's just my experience, is, is a 60/40 about right now.
Well, if we're going to do it, I think we ought to have it in place before we actually sign on the bottom line.
Yeah, you know, look, enough is enough. We'll put the policy in place and then we'll go back and do this other stuff, all right? I don't care what she says about this thing or the other. We're running this show, let's put the policy in place and then we'll do the other half of it.
Agreed.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I want to entertain a motion to...
Continue.
Continue.
Continue with the next meeting.
Continuing this matter to the next meeting.
I move this, sorry, June 13th, 2022. I move we continue the discussion to pass a resolution in 2022, David R. G. O'Toole, a resolution approving the financial agreement until June 13th. Is that what we said?
Second.
Your motion in a second, or the court keeps calling?
We should have called.
Yes.
We should have called. Yes, Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again. Feel free to stay or go.
All right. Do we have anything else or accounts and finances? I'm assuming that's it. The mayor's report? I don't have anything for our audience this evening, so I'll move Court Aragoni.
Nothing from Court Aragoni?
Well, you know, I think since she doesn't have a report, we should just at least say happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Say happy birthday to...
Cliff Aragoni.
It's her birthday today.
Happy birthday, Louis.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for showing up on your birthday to a meeting.
Yes. All right, manager.
I have one item for the council's consideration this evening, and that's our maintenance agreement for IT systems. As many of you know, Proven IT has been maintaining those IT equipment and acting as our consultant since January of 2019. Staff has been very pleased with our performance and the services that they have offered. One other company had served us prior to Proven IT in their role and had done so for a number of years prior. Projects and installs are completed in efficient, timely manner and we believe they've gone above and beyond their technical abilities for us. There is, however, a significant cost increase that they are asking the village to absorb and is on their device per device cost mainly. It was $100 per device per... It was a hundred dollars per device per month. The new cost is a hundred and thirty dollars per device per month. We also have increased the number of devices that they will be covering by about fourteen percent. What they didn't do in their last proposal, the costs that we're comparing to, is they didn't account for some four devices previously. There's a list of services in your packet that go on to explain what they do with supporting the village in many ways, but I'm gonna take just leave of that and just talk a little bit about what they do. Proven IT is located in Tinley Park, so they're located nearby. They are able to dispatch their personnel very quickly when needed on site. Most of their services they can provide remotely, tying into our system and troubleshooting items. They are able to, because they are a large company, able to retain and attract top IT talent. They have good knowledge of our systems and our staff and what we're looking for from them. They have knowledge of all our partner, such as the Kirk County Sheriff and our leads in capers systems. They've been able to work with those agencies and troubleshooting different systems and making sure we get back online when needed. They do have backups of our systems, as most vendors would, but they also can restore our network within a few hours to a half a day should the village ever be subjected to a ransomware attack. Those are things that we find are very valuable to the village, but they are asking for an increase in price. Their last contract was over three years. They're asking for another three-year contract, a thirty-six-month contract at forty, four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars per month. The village has budgeted this next year a little bit in excess of what they're looking for. They're, we budgeted fifty thousand seventy-nine dollars for fiscal year twenty-three. The cost of this proposal would be forty-nine thousand nine twenty. So, the staff is asking for the council to consider waiving the bidding process and staying with Proven Business Systems LLC in the amount of four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars a month, the minimum monthly charge. That minimum is if we have to call, go over, call them in for extra, it's not contained in their service schedule, which is most, almost everything. That's for thirty-six months effective, May first, two thousand twenty-two. I might add that the, in the agreement that's attached to this memo is not exactly the last, I'm sorry, the latest one. There is a one we didn't include, and that has a term and six terms and termination. This contract in front of you has sixty months. It is for thirty-six months. If the council were to approve this, we would make sure that that term is correct with what the council would approve. And technically, it's my guess, so the staff is looking for the council to consider this.
And the council have any questions?
I do. So, how long have these guys been our business, Proven Business Partners?
Since two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen. So, three years.
Yep.
So, this is the renewal of the original contract.
Correct.
And what have they justified this thirty percent increase for?
I don't know.
Gas prices? Electrons cost more?
Pretty much their staffing costs and they have bought out. I believe that's, that's the main thing that they're, they're asking for, unlocking that price of, you know, like a ten percent per year increase that they're locking into the last three years.
Well, not even ten percent per year. It's thirty percent upfront.
It's thirty percent, yes.
So, that's thirty percent, not ten?
Nope, it is. You're right.
Okay. Don't try and sugarcoat it.
I'm not gonna.
It's a lot. And so, there are extra service costs above and beyond the service contract? Is that what I heard you say?
There could be if we call them in and if somebody could help me out with that one.
If, if we have like a, they have to come on site, then that's additional.
So, help me here. What's the current situation with them? Do they charge us extra for that now?
You know, ninety-five percent of the time we, I handle it when they call in, we do everything remotely. Once in a while, we do have to have them come out, like when we had the wide open west damage cable issue.
Astounding incident?
Yeah, we had to have them come out on site because we actually had to redo some cables in our room.
Okay, so I get that, but did they charge us for that currently? Was that a service call that wasn't part of...
That was above and beyond what we pay for. This is a maintenance group that strictly...
Can you guys give me some sort of idea about how much above and beyond the contract, ten percent, fifty percent, a hundred percent, that we pay in additional service cost? So, they raise the price thirty thousand, thirty percent, and then they say, well, yeah, but, you know, that doesn't cover everything. Right? I'm missing something here.
Well, when I did have a conversation, I don't want to speak out of context, but I did have a conversation about how much it did go up. They were saying it's a competitive market. I did talk to other IT companies. We did talk to two other IT companies, and the price for technicians to try to keep them, to retain them, it's going up. They're all losing technicians left and right. So, that's a majority of it, like we talked about. It's a very, very competitive market right now for IT. So, they're basically compared to the two companies that I spoke with, it's pretty much all the same ballpark. They're actually on the lower end compared to another quote we received about six months ago, which is shocking. But we don't usually have them out on site. It's very rare. It's gotta be kind of after you've lost a half a time on site. Almost all of it is done in-house with other staff members.
You should bill us down for that service call.
They're giving us a, well, they're giving us a free month, and it's something we've talked about.
They're not giving us jack.
Well, they're crediting us a month, but it's, it's, like, for example, the technician that did come out, if something like that ever was to happen, I've been trained, and so has somebody else, how to do the cable ourselves, so if it ever happened again, we would all have to do it ourselves. It was, it was, it was a tricky thing that we never thought we'd ever have to come across. Luckily, we have a backup circuit, so we were able to come right back up. But it's something that they do came out and trained us to do, so if that ever happened again, I would have to call them out.
I mean, as you can tell, the thing that bothers me is we're waiting a bidding process for a bid that we've only been in for three years. It's not like we've got a twenty-year history with these people. And I understand the pain of having to switch vendors when they've got everything that they need. To me, that oughta make, that oughta make them want our business, not increase it by thirty percent, but maybe I'm just sensitive to that.
Right, and I totally understand something that I went back to them too when I saw that, when I, it so much, and as far as shopping around for companies, it's not a big deal, but because we have certain programs, like the police department, for example, lead scapers, they cook on it, they develop relationships with them, and it's hap...
I can't believe they're the only company that has a relationship with the cook.
They absolutely, they absolutely are not, but it's just more, say, like for our particular systems and stuff. They, they do quite a few villages, but the first year is kind of a...
Trick.
Yeah, like, right, and something might happen one time and not happen again for three years, but they usually have the technicians that already know how to...
I mean, quite frankly, to me, if I were in this business, I would think all your expenses run end low. You gotta do all this work to bring out a new client, et cetera, et cetera, and now there's been three years, and everybody works well, and, you know, they find how do you do? A thirty percent increase just astounds me.
Kathy, trying to give the council a sense of what is involved with this contract. I know having been involved in these contracts for...
You know, that's, that's a good question.
Hundred and fifty personal offerings.
I'd say I'll, right.
Probably four, five, six people on staff that work in IT. So, having IT is expensive. How we're doing it with the number of employees we have, four Kathy assisting, and then a four thousand dollar a month contract is pretty cost-effective, based on my experience. But give everyone else a sense of what's involved on a day-to-day basis when you have thirty-two users.
I'd say, for example, I'd say I, I'd spend maybe two hours a day on IT issues, and that's, that's probably on the, on the good side of it. As far as being the coordinator, well, I can do this, reset this, but now that I have been with them, a lot of times I call them, I don't need to be part of it because they know what to do, they know the flow, they, they know how all our stuff is set up. So, that part of it, but it is, I mean, it's not, it's not just, it's not just computers, it's also our servers, which this also includes like the backup, which in being a police department, we have like double-layered security, so there's not, there's some things I can't do, they have like certain tier technicians and stuff. But we did, we did put this out to bid three years ago, they really came in lower than the other two companies. So, as far as what's going on...
Are those other two companies the people that you talked to this time around?
One of the companies, yes. I did get official quotes on there, but I do know that it's them trying to keep technicians, like some of my technicians that I got familiar with, two of them know that I already lost because they're being offered a huge amount of money to work from home. It's a highly, highly competitive, it's, it's kind of crazy right now. And then the other, so the one company we did have come out, they were a lot, I think they're, I think fifty percent more than, than this company was. And then the other company that we did have for eight years...
This, we're talking about three years ago?
Yeah, no, this company we backed about six months ago, just because they are interested, they caught on us, and we gave them, they did inventory, and they were, they were quite higher than Proven. I think they're up to fifty percent higher, if not lower. And then the other company that we did have for nine years before this one, I, it's still in relationships with their techs, and they're, they're, they're a lot more expensive here.
So, then the last question I have is, have, let's just, is what's contained in the basic contract in terms of the level of service, the same as it's been for the last three years, or are now there different levels, and there's a risk that not only is it thirty percent higher on your monthly minimum, but conceivably stuff has shifted from being covered under the monthly minimum to not being covered under the monthly minimum?
I would say that it would be most of the stuff, yeah, I wouldn't say most stuff is covered. The one thing with other aging things that we have here, like the telephone system, the voicemail system, and the email system, those things are all kind of aged, and so those things kind of need a little bit more upkeep, so, but they definitely are trying to keep our business, like, for example, during media attacks, I'm getting answered back. I have people's phone numbers and stuff, so they're, I believe their level of customer service has gone up a lot in this, in the last year and a half because, you know, they're trying to be competitive out there too.
They're all working from home. Thank you. I said they're all working from...
And like, for example, like, right, we have semi-urgencies because they're so close, I have technician here within an hour, and that's pretty much the level of service that they give us.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I do have one. Maybe a couple of questions in the comment. I, I don't have an objection to spending money when it's needed, especially for, trying to keep the system that we currently have in place operating. I understand that. I guess the issue I have is, I'm looking at a document that was prepared for our identification, and it doesn't really, there's no transparency there. I, I think I know what you're asking for. You know, there were twenty-eight devices you requested by four, so now you've got thirty few devices with an increase of, of thirty dollars per device. I got all that math, but then the math starts getting fuzzy because you've got a whole bunch of your Internet services and all that kind of stuff. And then I'm hearing, well, it covers this, it covers that. You have to make it transparent so that people who don't do this on a daily basis like us can sit up here and read the document, you know, this is what we want, this is what we want, and here are going to be the ultimate end result. I understand we've got a crappy system, they gotta work harder to keep it running. I get that, but it doesn't say that we're on a paper, I think. So, help us out, give us the tools that we need to make an educated vote. Once again, I do not have an objection to give money when it's needed. There just needs to be some justification before so we can make an informed decision. That's all I'm asking for.
Well, to amplify, Commissioner Reed, that leads to a whole other level of issues. I mean, there's infrastructure money floating around these days. Do we have a plan to elevate our infrastructure so that it doesn't occupy such a large component of some IT tech's time? If the system is aging out, it's not gonna get better.
So, so every year, every year...
Most of the computer system, that part, we've been updating, the council's been approving that, their servers and everything else. I think what Kathy referred to was our telephone system. That is probably nine years old now, and our email system is on board, and that's again about eight or nine years old, but they've been keeping up with the current models of that. What else is in there?
We, we do that inventory once a year, and they tell us, they give us a plan, like a one, two, three-year plan, and this is the first year that we actually didn't have a budget for any large IT projects. And when I mentioned having like outdated equipment, it wasn't so much the IT stuff, it was the outside vendors as far as like, you know, upgrading to fiber, they like, he and Rick had talked about the telephone system, phone system. It might be something simple as, you know, just coming in to do some work on our panel and stuff. But I would say, if, and I could easily have the full reports and stuff, but like fifty percent of the, I don't know how to say this, fifty percent of the calls we do get that is heavy on the police side, where it's like leads and capers, when we're dealing with third-party vendors, you know, they might have some, the updates on their server that, you know, they didn't get past us, and now we can't access it on this computer. There's also things where like websites have changed, like sometimes leads can work on Chrome, but then capers can't work on, you know, Explorer. So, there's, sometimes it's silly stuff, but in effect, I mean, I think our police department only has nine computers, so that's heavy on, on that side. So, it's just, it's across the board, I mean, as far as, you know, it's not so much old infrastructure, it's just sometimes that, like our, they have relationships with our third-party, like the phone system and stuff like that, so.
Well, I guess, I mean, I don't want to belabor the point, but I'm past that now, so I'll jump with both feet. So, if part of the problem is our system, then part of the solution belongs to, requires addressing that particular problem. So, from what you're saying, I guess, that we get suggestions from the IT people about what we need to be careful about looking at?
Well, like, for example, there are certain things out there, like in the, in the IT world, where they'll say like new computers, certain patches don't work on like Windows, like, you know, the two thousand seven computers and stuff.
I hope the God went up, right?
No.
Commissioner, I think, I think what, you know, we, we have, we receive through our annual audit, and we usually budget for and bring to the council any updates, again, any servers, any computers, new computers, software systems we need, so we are pretty current in all that.
So, manager Bing, what I hear is you saying we're pretty current, and I hear the people in the trenches saying our stuff is old, antiquated, and it's falling apart. Help me here.
I think what you heard was that in the police side, mainly, as you have capers and leak systems that are third-party, and when they go down, there's a lot of switching that goes on when they come up. Our, our computer, software, and systems that the village has on our side is pretty current. Do we need some upgrading? Yes, we do. We always need to keep current, but this year's budget didn't contain any big items because we're banking on all of those things.
I'm gonna stop now, but I don't like that answer because it conflicts with what the person in the trench told me. I'll stop. If we need equipment, we need equipment. If we need equipment, we need a plan. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, and I think when I met, I said with the older, the older equipment, that's all covered on here, so when I'm on the phone, the technician for three hours...
You're missing my point. If we keep putting Band-Aids on old equipment, we're gonna have to keep putting Band-Aids on old equipment. If we need to take a bigger picture look of what it is that we need to keep moving forward instead of just trying to fix the problem, I think that's a better use of people's time. That's all I'm saying. I'm lobbying for you, pal.
Oh, no, I know. Oh, no, I know, and it's, it's hard to explain all the situations that come up when we, we talk about police department a different part of the time, like, I don't know, she could be about the systems for our needs and.
We certainly account for probably ninety percent of nuances on the IT platforms. We went from a, from a, when I started, everything was kind of paper, where everything we do is tracked electronically from the moving of the car to coming in here to use the restroom to interfacing with someone on a, on a call. What she's talking about are, that whole system is dependent on, look, think of it as tentacles. You have the all-of-state police, they're feeding into that platform. You have the report platforms that are feeding into it. You have what's called the CAD system, which is the computer dispatch system that feeds into it. And we are sort of at the will of those when someone in the state police, either the crime lab section or their fingerprint bureau of identification section wants to change something, that all these platforms that we are dependent on from the Tommy Park apartment, which we have a lot here tonight, there's a ripple effect on us. And what we have may not work only because it requires some interfacing between proven or Kathy and someone from the state police to mesh that up. It's not so much the equipment is antiquated, the equipment is malfunctioning, it's a question of we, particularly, I think, I, we on the police side are much more dependent on all these other agencies than any other department in the village because everything we do interfaces with someone else and when they change something or they adjust something or upgrade something, it can be, you know, like, it's not unusual, her and I have spent Christmas Eve together because there's, something's changed in Springfield or something's changed through the Cook County Sheriff's Police dispatch system and that. And that's where it gets into, I, I.
That's what you need an IT person for.
Well, we, we have a wonderful one here.
Thanks.
That does the best job.
No, I'm sorry, I gotta work here now. I finally heard the word that I was just gonna say. Why are we paying somebody else to manage our IT? Why don't we have our own IT person, Kathy's doing the nail along with a number of other jobs? Why are we paying somebody else when we can do it ourselves? Have our own IT person on staff to manage our IT? Then we know we're doing whatever we're running on this other company. And it seems like that all the kind of stuff on the police side changes all, integration, you know, we can't manage that stuff. But if we had one person that could keep track of all of this, maybe, this maybe things may work better. I don't know, just a, just a random thought.
Well, I, I agree with you, Commissioner Reed. It seems to me that we're paying somebody to be that one person, not Kathy.
Well, if I'm paid though, I mean, if you think about it, we're paying, and what we pay them, we're paying less than sixty thousand dollars a year and I'm betting an IT person to be on staff full-time twenty-four seven is gonna cost more than that. And at least then we have a multitude of IT people that maybe have a strength in one thing and stronger in something else, and whenever we have a problem, they've got somebody at the call, that, at the ready, that can troubleshoot it for us. I mean, I understand the idea of having our own in-house person, thank Kathy for who you are, but I feel like it's a.
Well, I mean, if you're doing two hours a day, that's a quarter of her work effort directed towards IT. Either these guys gotta do a better job for increasing it by thirty percent or we gotta figure out where to dispense. It seems to me that this is not the way it should be. She shouldn't have to be, if we got a group of people that we're paying money to, it shouldn't have to be a quarter of her work effort to keep it going. And I apologize, but what I heard was the system is antiquated. That's what I heard, guys. I don't make this stuff up. And all I'm trying to address is if it's antiquated, we gotta fix it.
If they didn't raise it twice thirty percent, we should be having such a hard time with it?
I, uh, well, what would they raise it to, Mr. Wade?
Well, I'm just asking if they, if they did.
We can't have, we can't have anyone from the audience speaking unless they come up and generally there's a public content, public comment section in which those comments are, so I guess my question is, what do we want to do here? I'm happy to continue this to the next meeting as well. And we will instruct staff on the various issues that you raised and to address the various scenarios that you outlined, which I'm sure they will be happy to do. Is there any urgency to approving this contract at this meeting? No, we're, we're still on there, you know, they'll take us for the village month-to-month.
Okay. That deal, right? Right. Be glad I stayed out on the correct.
So is that what the council wants to do?
I am now prepared to move on this issue and I refer that we continue with the staff in this additional presentation for short-term issues and grievances.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, will the court please call the roll?
Do we need to date, do we need to date, sir?
Yes, to the next meeting, June thirteenth.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yep.
Commissioner Moore, please?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Anything else matter to him? I have not the same. Announcements. I encourage all residents to sign up for our weekly news. Every Friday, the village sends out the most current village news right to your inbox. You can sign up using your email address on the village website or by calling the village hall, phone number seven oh eight six seven one three seven hundred. If you do not wish to sign up, the informations can still be viewed on the village Facebook at pailaspark.org, the village website. Two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three vehicle stickers now on sale. Notices for village vehicle stickers and tags were made about last week. Village stickers, motorcycle tags and dog tags for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three year are now on sale at the village hall. All vehicles registered to the corporate boundaries of the village of Pailas Park must display a current village sticker or tag by July first of the year. If you do not receive from my notice or have other questions, please call the village hall. Cal-SAG Trail dedication, Saturday, June fourth, two thousand twenty-two, is National Trails Day. On this day, the friends of the Cal-SAG Trail will be dedicating two theme benches to the Cal-SAG Trail at nine AM to trailhead near eighty-sixth Avenue and Pailas Park. Two benches in Pailas Park are being donated by Sally Temple and the other by Bridge Fair. Other benches will be installed in Pailas Township also. Go to calstattrail.org for more information about the Cal-SAG Trail. Pailas Township will be holding an electronics recycling prescription for take-back on Saturday, June fourth, two thousand twenty-two, from nine AM to noon. The collection is at the Pailas Township office at eight, one oh, eight oh two South Roberts Road. Information fires are available in the capture lobby at pailast Township dot org. Memorial Day Remembrance Ceremony, please join us Monday, May thirtieth, in honor of those who made the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms. Shore Program will be held at eleven AM at the DFW Memorial on the Pailas Green, eight diagonal line of West Humber twenty-third. For Pailas Township residents, only Pailas Township and the Cook County Sheriff's Recycling Program, electronics recycling prescription for take-back on Saturday, June fourth, two thousand twenty-two, nine AM to twelve noon or until the truck is full, whichever comes first. And I assume there's more information about this on the website? Our website could be.
Yes.
That should be on the E News as well. All right. And that concludes all my announcements. Citizens and visitors come up here. Anyone from the audience like to address the council lines? Hearing no such requests, I proceed to motion to adjourn this time.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, will the court please call the roll?
Yes.
Yep.
We should be.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you all, good evening. Be safe out there, particularly this coming weekend.